Former President Donald Trump was indicted today for trying to overturn his loss to Joe Biden.
We have to win in November, or we're not going to have Pennsylvania. They'll change the name. They're going to change the name of Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvanians have a unique role with democracy and freedom. We have seen Pennsylvanians rise up at the ballot box.
The work of making this world resemble one that you would prefer to live in is a lunch pail job.
Hi, and welcome back to the Keystone Recording Podcast. I'm your host, Jesse White, and today we're going to be talking about the Central York School District, which maybe a month ago would have seemed like a very boring topic, but I think not so much these days. And I'm joined with two guests that are candidates for the school board in the upcoming election, Amy Milston and Joel Fulker. So thank you both for taking the time to join us.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks for having us.
Okay, so Central York is famous now or infamous for the luckily now overturned book ban on basically banning works about minorities and African Americans. And we're going to talk about that, but I want to step backwards a little tiny bit. Because there were issues in this school district even before that. And I thought it might be useful for people to understand kind of the backstory and kind of what got you two, you're part of a slate of four candidates.
Right.
What got you into the race for school board before, obviously, you were on the ballot before the book ban even happened?
Yeah. Joel, you want to take it?
Sure. I can speak for myself at least. We start, I started paying a lot more attention, wow, over a year ago, I guess, when the school board had, as always, they have curriculum that are brought forward for review. It happens every number of years. It has to be updated because state standards change, because, you know, they have to adjust and see how our school is doing when it comes to different, you know, state testing or other benchmarks. And there were four curricula that were brought forward, and they were all just tabled and kicked to the side by the current board members. That they, it's guidance, curriculum, health, language arts, and social studies. They kept saying, we don't know enough about it. We need to review it. Well, it's been over a year. They still haven't reviewed it. But what happened at the time was, there was also the Diversity Task Force. It's been around for 15 years. And because of the rise in the media attention around George Floyd and many of the other people who lost their lives to law enforcement and that being kind of highlighted in our culture, all of a sudden, the Diversity Committee started getting a whole lot more attention by our board members. And they began to kind of conflict, kind of put things together between Diversity Committee resources and social studies curriculum, even though they really had nothing to do with each other. They saw them as the same thing. And so all of a sudden, these boogeyman terms like CRT and, you know, white saviorism and things like, all of a sudden, now the white people are being attacked. This reverse racism, they love to say, if that's even a thing, which, if you look at the definitions, really isn't. But you look at all that stuff, and all of a sudden, they started making more and more news. They were saying no. They were tabling curriculum without any plans of really looking at it, you know, that we can see now for over a year. And that caught my attention. I started coming out to the rallies that we had last year. And we had a couple rallies last year around the Diversity Committee. I saw how they treated the Diversity Committee. They really opened it up to every single person. They broadcasted when they were meeting, put out all the stuff that they were working, encouraged people to get on and make their opinions heard. And all of a sudden, the Diversity Committee was pretty much shut down because you had angry people on their Zoom calls, just yelling and screaming and claiming them being socialist Marxists and things like that. So that was one of the things that really grabbed my attention. There's other stuff that went on as well. Maybe, Amy, I don't know exactly what totally got your attention going, but that was definitely how I started to get a lot more involved in the district. And like I said, that's just a piece.
And Amy, before I jump over to you, just for the benefit of the listeners, I want to read a couple of quotes from the current school board members from last year, when we were talking, they were talking about the Diversity Committee. This is from board member Vicky Guth, who said, quote, "The references that were made in this committee about teaching tolerance talked about white privilege and white saviorism. So you can't win. If you're normal, you're a white privilege. If you're trying to change things, you're doing it out of the savior mentality." And then she said that this is why students, quote, "want to be socialists." Then where's the quote from Veronica Gemma, who clearly, I think, is the, you know, the crown jewel, so to speak, of your school board? I don't see.
Your words, of course, your words.
Yeah, absolutely. But she definitely comes across as kind of the ringleader of all this. And is definitely a, you know, definitely somebody that is, you know, kind of pushing, clearly pushing an agenda. I don't think that's, here's what she said. Here's what Veronica Gemma said. Quote, "Do we even have a problem? And if we don't, why are we bringing this into the classroom to teach these benchmarks based on what happened in July?" Along with many other things, talking about white privilege and things like that. So, and the reverse racism that you mentioned. So, you know, this is clearly, ironically, they want a, they, you know, these are the same people that are, you know, freaking out now over, quote, "critical race theory" being pushed in schools. But they're saying, you know, even though it's not really an issue, that they're making an issue, but they were also saying that we shouldn't be talking about racial equality because to them, it wasn't an issue.
Right.
So, you know, the hypocrisy is fully on display. So that's just to give a little background, but Amy, please go ahead and give us your kind of, how you got, where you are in all this.
Yeah. Actually, my story is very similar to Joel's. This is not, running for school board was not even on my radar a year ago. And then it's almost a year ago that that protest happened. It was in September of 2020. And my daughter and I, my daughter is very active in social justice. That's kind of her thing. And so we went together to that protest. And it was basically protesting the fact that they just didn't want to address this curriculum, the social studies curriculum that was brought up by our administrators and teachers, the experts in education. Not, you know, the school board does not have experts in education sitting on it. So the experts are the administrators and the teachers. And they reviewed this curriculum. They vetted it. They decided that it was a good way forward for our district and presented it to the board. And really, it should just be a formality at that point because the board itself is not expert in curriculum. Nobody on that board is. So it was really just a formality. But because there were, there were lessons and units at different grade levels discussing racism, discussing inclusion and diversity, that immediately the shackles went up, you know, on the backs of some of the more right wing conservative members, of which there are way too many on the current board. And so, and the way that the MO for this board seems to be, if something makes you uncomfortable and you think you're going to get a little pushback from your people that support you, you're just going to back off. You're going to address it immediately. You're going to either, you know, do something so that you don't look bad and save face, or you're just gonna completely get rid of it because you don't like it. And so your personal agenda is the overwhelming trigger for every decision you make. And that's exactly what was happening. And so we just couldn't, we couldn't believe it. And meanwhile, the scores, our test scores and our ranking as a school district, which we used to be in the top two in York County in terms of metrics, you know, testing metrics and ranking, we were very high up. In the past few years, we have plummeted by hundreds in the state and by dozens in, you know, more locally. And it's a direct reflection. I was a substitute teacher in the district for several years and stopped doing it before COVID. Like, you know, when COVID hit last year, I didn't do it for my safety. But I saw what was going on in the classrooms. And I saw, I talked to teachers in every grade, at every grade level in all of our school buildings. And I saw that there were issues. And these issues had to do with some of the curriculum that was being used. It just, it wasn't, it wasn't working. So they came up with this really good curriculum that they thought was, you know, appropriate. And they presented it, and the board just said, oh, I don't like, there's too many buzzwords in here I don't like. And then, like Joel said, it got conflated with this diversity resource list, which was created by our Diversity Committee, which, by the way, our committee was like, you know, like a beacon of what you do in a school district. Like, this is what, this is the best way to address diversity. You have a committee, you have it, you actually have employees of the district that head the committee. And you, you know, you use them to, you know, for everything that you could possibly think of to help embrace all of your student body. We are the second most diverse district in, yeah, in York County. So we have a lot of minority students. And so this, this committee was doing wonderful things for over a decade. And then they created this list in the wake of George Floyd and everybody else. And it was just supposed to be a resource. It was just a resource for teachers because teachers were saying, hey, I'm going to have students, because this, it was over the summer and school was starting, and they needed something to go to. Like, what can I look at? What can I see? And so, and to teach my, our students. So that's how, and it got conflated with the social studies curriculum. So they just tabled it. So that really got me angry. And so I went, and that kind of set this, I think, set the stage for me running, was just hearing about that and how they, they didn't even want to address those difficult issues.
Well, you made a really important point that I don't want to get, I don't want to be buried, which is the diversity of the district. Do you know what the breakdown is in terms of, you know, racial or ethnic break makeup of the student body? I mean, is a general percentage?
It's about, I've heard 30% minority, and that includes all types of minorities. You know, that's black, brown, Asian, you know, eastern, eastern Asian, you know, it's every, Indian, it's like a lot of different minorities. So it's, that's, I think, when you, people of color probably make up about, I think, 18%. And then, yeah, so that's about, and it's this, York City is the only more diverse district in York County. So York City is very diverse, and we are next. And there are about 13 districts, I'm sorry.
Do you know how many kids are in the, in the district?
It's over 5,000.
Okay, so, yeah, so we're, so we're talking like 1,500 kids or so that were, you know, that may have had a personal, you know, this had a profound impact on. Plus, not only that, I mean, I know as a parent of, you know, my kids are six and seven, so they were five and six last year. But, you know, it definitely, you know, watching all this happen, you know, it was, how do we talk to our kids? You know, it's really not, obviously, it's going to hit differently based on your life experience. But, you know, it was something that needed to be talked about to everybody. And, you know, and, yeah, I get what you're saying, that the, to have resources there to do that are, you know, to find them, it can be difficult. And so to have this kind of vetted list available for educators, parents, whoever, you know, it's hard to see what the negative was, but they somehow, these folks on the board seem to find.
Yes.
They found the anti-silver lining, I suppose. So that seemed then, you know, when that all happened, there was kind of a, you know, kind of an uproar. But it looks as though the board didn't really budge off of any of that. You know, they, everything just kind of stayed the same. And I'm assuming that at that point, the community, based on what you're saying, you know, the community kind of started to really take notice.
Right.
And say, wait a minute, something's not right here.
Right.
Is that inaccurate?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And then instead of, you know, let's fast forward a little bit now. Instead of kind of backing off, which, you know, a lot of people, okay, we're in an election year. Maybe we'll just kind of back off, get reelected, and then do whatever. They decided to just go all in.
Well, yeah.
So let's, or talk about, get us to this year.
Okay, well, I just, I think that's the biggest question that people have, including myself, as to kind of what happened between last fall and this end of the summer or the beginning of the school year. Because there's all this time where this list existed and the curriculum was still tabled. And, you know, why, why is the uproar now? Why is the media getting involved now? And there is, there was a big difference. So, you know, and looking back at video and audio of old board meetings from last fall and summer, you know, you can kind of see how the vote went and everything. And even though they made the decision at that time in November, on the November 9th, 2020 board meeting, to ban this list, to not allow it to be used. And you can use whatever word you want. It's a ban.
Well, they used, they used the word kill.
Yeah, kill, yeah, they actually, right. They said, kill the list, exactly. So even then, so they said that they did not want teachers and administrators to use this list back in the fall. Somehow it got lost in translation and that, and that the administration was not given a directive to tell the teachers at that time. There was something like, it just didn't get transmitted to the teachers at whatever until August 11th of this year, which was a week, school started August 18, one week before the high school principal sent an email to the staff of the high school. And the subject line of that email was banned resources. And basically had the PDF of the list. And the text of the email was paraphrasing, but was basically, "This is a list of resources that you are not permitted to use. Please make sure that your teaching materials do not contain any of these resources in it. Thank you very much." And he signed it. And then that's when it started. Because then everybody saw, holy cow, this list is, you are telling us we cannot use anything on this list. And you, and then when we looked at the list, we couldn't believe what was on the list. And they were saying that we couldn't use it. So it was unbelievable.
And Joel, I'm going to go to you one second, but so just to be clear for people that are listening, the list of what was banned was actually the list of resources that was provided by the Diversity Committee. So the very thing that was designed to help people make sense of some of these issues, these complicated issues, were then banned as being subversive or, you know, reverse racial, or whatever they want to call it. So that's, that's where the banned list came from. They took, they took this positive and turned it into a negative.
Right.
Is that accurate?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
One thing I just want to add there, you know, Amy, to what she's sharing is, I think, I think some of us took, took the board at its word in the fall. I think when they talked about, we have some parents that are concerned. We want to review some of these things. You know, the same thing they said about the four curricula that they tabled as well. We got to review it. And I think a lot of people, at the same time, were caught up with everything going on with COVID-19 and the school's response to that. You know, what were they going to listen to or not listen to in terms of the medical experts and doctors? And a lot of people were, were paying attention to how many kids had COVID in the classroom and stuff like that. And so I think they was able to kind of be, not snuck through, they didn't sneak it through. It was very public, but to kind of, all right, they say they're going to look at it. It's been two months since it really came up. And so let's, let's see if they do it. They said they're gonna, you know, create a curriculum committee. Well, that committee is still not met over a year later, you know, that they were going to review it. Again, they had a problem with the Diversity Task Force being a range of people from parents to teachers and administrators and other people that, oh, they're not, you know, professionals. They shouldn't be creating resources. But, yeah, at the same time, they talk about their curriculum committee is going to be parents and teachers and board members and, it's the same exact thing. Like you said at the beginning, the hypocrisy is great. But I think a lot of people were kind of caught up in what's going on with COVID. They were fighting even then against state recommendations and things like that, putting funding and things at risk. But what I have to do, do have to give credit for is the one silver lining of the shutdown or COVID-19 or things is that their, their meetings were put online. And that's, I think, how people, instead of having maybe 10 people at a meeting when they're in person, all of a sudden, now you got 40, 50, 60, 70 people watching these meetings. And everything that they were able to do before that was kind of just, you know, nobody really paid attention to what the school board did. All of a sudden, now there's video, there's audio, people are watching it, they're sharing it, they're talking about it. And so that all became exposed. And part of what we've done then is really go backwards then. All right, if this is what's being exposed now, what were they doing before when not many people were there? Before, honestly, yeah, I was paying all that much attention to it. And so we were able to go back multiple years. And there's great, I don't know if you came across this, Jesse, in your, in your research, but there's a great timeline that some parents put together, going back a couple of years of actions where they, you know, and some of the members are the same, some are different, of course. Veronica Gemma is one of them that's, that's still there. Jane Johnson is still there. Others are still there. That they tried to get rid of the diversity coordinators to save a few dollars. And I'm sorry, that's, when you're in the second most diverse district, that shouldn't be your bottom of the block first thing to do to save money, to cut your diversity coordinators. They, so, I mean, it starts years ago when they did that. Then the, the policy on bullying, the policy on, you know, protective, protective groups in the district, they fought when they had to add the term gender identity on there. You know, again, it kind of played into these fears of boys are just going to sneak into girls locker rooms and take pictures or, you know, things like this. And so they fought and fought and fought and actually were willing to vote down the policy. When there was a meeting when only eight people were there, there was a tied vote, four to four, to vote down that policy, the protective, you know, parties and anti-discrimination policy, I should say. Finally got the word in my mouth. And luckily, one of the board members who wasn't there called it back up for a vote the following week and the past five, you know, then all of a sudden, now they're okay and they're voting for it because they knew they were going to lose. And so, I mean, there's just been this track record, and we could go on, but I don't want to take all day, of what they have been doing that's kind of pushed back against anything different from there. They're, they're quote unquote, "normal," and what they see is okay, this to continue with fight against it. So this is not just a recent thing, but it's finally in the light. And there's people who are doing the research. I've listened to meetings. And like I said, there's other parents out there, they're putting together timelines of all the things that they've done over, say, the past three years that have kind of led us to where we are today.
So, you know, you talk about other parents and everything, and, you know, in a district that big, you know, a lot of times, you know, with COVID and with everything else, and, you know, the economic issues that have come with that, you know, the bandwidth that we have as parents just becomes, you know, so stretched to the point where, you know, I don't have time to watch a video of a school board meeting. If there's something serious going on, I'll hear about it some other way, right? You know, because at the end of the day, we trust the people we elect for these local offices to do their jobs, you know, in a, in a pretty basic way. Now, there's obviously been a huge spotlight shined on school boards with the whole masking issue. Which, what is the masking policy in Central York?
Huh. I'll take this one. The masking policy was, it was, originally, they voted to just have it be completely optional. That was the original vote. And lots and lots of families were okay with that, and lots of families were not okay with that. And then.
Well, let me just, real quick, Amy, real quick, the original vote was in July, when we had like one or two cases a day, like it was, it was gone. So that was, that was one, and Amy, I'll let you finish, but that was, I'm sorry, I'm totally jumping.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to point that out. Again, there's, there's a pattern of how they act. And, you know, so it started in July, they voted, you know, and a lot of us were like, okay, well, hopefully, if things get worse before school starts, they'll adjust.
Yes.
And I just wanted to point out that when they, when they made the mask optional thing, it was in July when there was next to zero cases in our county. And then they blamed us for not being concerned then, when end of August rolls up and now there's 100 cases a day, and now we're up to 300, you know, 250, 70 cases a day. So anyway, just the pattern and how, how they seem to work. Sorry, Amy.
No, it's okay. Joel, go ahead because you're doing a good job. So go ahead. You could take the rest of it.
No, 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 it's, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry.
No, it's okay.
The patterns, the patterns are what drive me crazy.
Yeah.
And that, that's why.
No, Joel's, Joel's exactly right. I mean, that is the pattern. So in the, in September, you know, we had, Joel and I both attended one of the meetings, and it was, it was a very lightly attended meeting where masking was, was a big talking point. And, you know, the health and safety plan that all schools have to implement before the school, just before the school started this year, ours wasn't really a plan at all. It was basically, it's a free for all in terms of masks. You can do whatever you want. We'll clean a little bit more. We'll have hand sanitizer at the ready. We'll clean the buses. You don't even have to wear a mask on the bus, even though that's a rule. All bus drivers have to wear masks. And it was just kind of whatever you want, freedom of choice is, you know, the way that they touted it. Freedom of choice for parents to parent as they see fit. But like Joel said, that did not take into account the spread in our local community, which was pretty, pretty intense and pretty significant with the Delta variant. And so, you know, about a week or two into school, then the governor issued the mandate, and the Department of Education issued the mandate that schools had to, you know, had, had to have masking was mandatory. And then, but they were not, they did not have a specific thing, a specific line item in the mandate about how to be, you know, the exemptions that were permitted. And it kind of loosely talked about them, and it said that a doctor's note was recommended or whatever, but it wasn't clear, there was, there was some information in the FAQ section, but it wasn't in the mandate itself. And so our board decided to, checking with our solicitor, made the decision that it wasn't really necessary for parents to obtain a doctor's approval and signature. And they just created a Google form. And the Google form basically said, your name, your kid's name, I exempt my kid for medical reasons. Signed it and done. And so there was, and Joel will attest to this because Joel's kids are young enough that they are not eligible for the vaccine yet. The, I think it was about maybe a 25% masked rate in the classrooms at that time. Yeah, so not a great situation. It wasn't until there was another communication sent out by the Department of Education that, you know, suddenly, school boards can be held personally. Like, each individual school board member could be held accountable and be litigated against. And if they were to, you know, defy this order, all of a sudden, then magically, they issued the mandate that absolutely, you had, you had to wear a mask unless you had a 504 IEP. You know, everything that the original mandate said, that, that's how that went down.
Right, there was, there was conversation around making sure that they're, you know, holding to their guns, not, not doing, not giving in, even when there was a threat of losing $5 million of funding. But as soon as it became clear that they could personally be liable, they made the decision real quick. So turns, again, pattern of, we're willing to give up state funding and cost taxpayers $5 million, but now that I'm personally liable, okay, never mind, now we'll, now we'll switch.
And at the most recent meeting last Monday, some parents called in and they're angry at the board now for caving, as they said, and basically caving to this pressure that's illegal from the state. And so at the end of the meeting, Veronica Gemma made a point of saying, well, because parents are upset about this, and I think three parents voiced their, you know, dissension to this opinion. Because parents are upset about it, we're going to revisit this, and we're going to see what we can do to help keep parents, you know, the freedom of parents' choice for their children alive. So they're revisiting that as well, right now.
And do you think, this might be a softball question, but, I mean, do you think that this is, you know, kind of the natural progression of Trumpism? You know, let me ask you this, or let me put it this way. Do you think this would have unfolded this way 10 years ago? Or do you think kind of the national political climate has kind of given license to these kind of brazen, you know, anti-science racist, you know, kind of actions?
I think that's the point. This has nothing to do with political party, in my opinion. Democrat, Republican, independent, whatever. I mean, this is, this is, you're getting to the extremes. And, you know, I think most common sense, you know, people recognize that this is not, this is not okay. I don't care what party you're in, this is not okay. And you do, you got the extremists on either side that shout and scream and go out the loudest. And that's, I'm afraid, we have, we have those people serving on our board. And, you know, we know that, you know, at least one of them, you know, follows a number of QAnon accounts and things like that. And so, and, and we know from, from hearing about it that that was one of the big pushes of these groups, was get involved in local elections, get on the board, get in, you know, get in charge of stuff. And you can, you can help save our country at the local level. And I believe that's, that's what we're, what we're seeing, is it's not Republican talking points. It's extremist talking points. It's QAnon talking points. It's, it's far right wing things. And, and their attacks back that we're socialist and Marxist is, again, just shows you that. You know, none of us, we're, we're not here to bring in the new, you know, communist Russia or China. You know, that's not our interest here.
Right.
You know, we just want to have common sense things that look at, hey, we're going to value all our students. We're going to make sure they're all equally protected. We're going to make sure our kids are prepared for the future and that they understand the diverse world that we live in. We're going to make sure our kids are prepared for the future and that they understand the diverse world that we live in is not something to be scared of. And even if you don't always like other cultures, you're going to have to deal with it, especially in the workplace. Like this is part of how this is 21st century econo, you know, economics. This is the economy we live in. This is a global economy. And, um, trying to pretend that, you know, this stuff doesn't exist or racism's not real. We're, we're, we're doing a disservice to our students. We're not preparing them for their lives ahead of them. And like I said, I, I think right now what we're seeing is, is finally that, that things are being uncovered, the lights being shine, you know, or shining on, um, on the actions. And, and there's enough people now in, in our area that are saying this is, this is not okay. This is not our world. This is not, this is not how we act. And, and I think that, that's where we're at and I'm thankful for that.
Yeah. To, to your point, oh, I'm sorry.
No, please go ahead.
I was going to say, just to your point, Jesse, when you were, you were asking about 10 years ago, uh, at the primary, um, back in May. I was, I was at the polling place with one of the current board members and she's been on for two years. And so she still has two years left on her term. So if we win, we'll be serving with her. She made the comment when she applied, when she ran for, for school board, there was none of this going on. None of this was happening. Nobody was, you know, yelling at each other and calling each other names and, and, and there was no real campaigning going on. It was, we, I just, I didn't have to do any of that. And it's like, well, because things have really changed since you ran. I mean, things are very different. And, you know, this, this, um, this call to run for school board, you know, on the extremist side, uh, is, is very new. Um, and it certainly was not in place 10 years ago. And it probably wasn't even in place four years ago. I think, I think the Trump playbook has been slowly making its way into local politics. And it is, it is definitely there now, but it was not even a couple of years ago.
Absolutely. And, and, you know, what I always say about Trumpism is maybe the lasting legacy of it, assuming, you know, we still have a democracy in a few years. But it, it, you know, kind of the lasting legacy that we're dealing with now, and I think you just described it is, I think that Trumpism gave people license to be the worst versions of themselves. You know, where there used to be this kind of moral, okay, even if I'm a bad person, I'm going to be ashamed to stand up and say it. Because we have this kind of social contract as society and, you know, there's things you just don't say, you know? And now you're, you know, you're kind of rewarded for that. You know, and it's kind of allowed people to tap into this really nasty vein of discourse that, you know, has really made politics, which was already a difficult arena to navigate, um, just downright dangerous.
Yes.
You know? So what I'm curious about then is, so, okay, so the book ban becomes public and the backlash starts and, and, you know, looked like the students really kind of carried the torch on that.
Yes.
Um, which is wonderful to see. Uh, and, you know, and they, and there, you know, there's many, many articles out there about the students stepping up. And, and then, you know, as it, uh, you know, kind of caught on, you're seeing, you know, the authors coming in and, you know, and very high profile people, you know, lending their support. And, you know, and the next thing you know, it's an international story.
Yes.
And so the board caves and, and reverses it. Do you, what insight do you have about that action? Kind of what does that tell you? You know, what, you know, I, I mean, do you think they just finally just gave in under the pressure? You know, because it had to be just absolutely brutal for them to, to do that. Uh, you know, how, how did they frame it? What, how did that all come about?
Well, Joel, is it okay if I take this one a little bit? And you can add to it?
Go for it.
Okay. So, yeah, so the interestingly, um, the first local article that came out, um, about, about this whole issue, came out September 1st, okay? There was a board meeting that week, they did nothing. There was a board meeting the following week where lots of parents called in and it was even in more papers and it was starting to move out of the local arena and into more of like the state, um, awareness arena. Still, they didn't vote then about it. They didn't even discuss it. It wasn't even an agenda item. It wasn't until, um, the middle of the week before they made their decision, which was last Monday, so a week ago today. When CNN and even Fox News did news segments, calling them out, um, saying, and if Fox News had Brad Meltzer, who was the author of I Am Rosa Parks, on their program and was like, like, this is crazy. Like, I mean, Fox News called them out for their, the ridiculousness of this. Finally, that's when they added this vote to the agenda and they, they voted on it. However, if you look at the statement from the, the president of the board, Jane Johnson, who actually her term ends, um, this year and she is not going for reelection. But the statement is very carefully crafted. And the statement says something to the effect of, this is a temporary reversal. Until we can, um, look more closely at these materials in conjunction with the new superintendent. And so let me go back a little bit. Our, our 11 or 12 year long tenured superintendent and the assistant superintendent resigned. And, uh, they resigned last year. They, they said they were going to resign in October of this year. They actually took the resignation a little bit early on September 3rd. Um, and you can, you can make whatever, you can draw whatever conclusions you want from that. But they, they did leave earlier than they said they would. So in the meantime, when they announced the resignation back in the early spring last year, um, the superintendent search started. Of course, this board is doing that superintendent search. They made their selection a few weeks ago and announced that selection. So that new chosen, uh, administer, uh, superintendent is going to be coming into his office, um, in November. Very soon, within a week or two after the election, which is November 2nd. So they, in this, in Jane Johnson's statement, she said that they're going to be working in conjunction with the new superintendent and looking at these materials more closely. And also in conjunction with the still unmet curriculum committee that they said they were going to form to look at all of these different curricula and look at the diversity resource list. And let me just say that the chair of this curriculum committee is none other than Veronica Gemma. So I will, yeah, so I just wanted to add that. So Joel, do you have anything to add there?
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's right. You know, I, I think the national spotlight put a lot of pressure on them. All of a sudden they go from doubling down one week to literally seven days later, they vote to reverse it. They all have their very, very carefully crafted statements on them of, of why this wasn't about race. And this was just a coincidence and this, this, just, you know, whatever they, they came up with, um, to try to save face. Trying, the one person who, who was added after the ban, Tim Strickler said that, well, I wasn't here when they banned it. Yeah, well, you were here for months and months and months while it was banned. And you were also part of the votes that either didn't put it on the agenda after it made the news or the week before, uh, was, was part of the group that doubled down on it. So trying to come up with an excuse like, oh, I wasn't here, that, no, you, you were here for plenty, plenty long period of time. You could have done something about it if, if you really disagreed with it. Again, it was, it was all very much, I think, a political thing to, um, like they realized they were losing that argument in our, in our county. I, I think, um, there's different, you know, they realize where maybe they do stronger and, and this was, this was not, not one of those areas. And so this was, I think in many ways, a save face thing and tried to win back some voters or get themselves out of the news before the November 2nd election. But yeah, like, like Amy said, it was said, well, well, you know, we're going to reverse the ban or it's not a ban. We're gonna, we're gonna unfreeze things. That was their other big thing. They, you know, they, they keep saying that we're making up this, this terminology to say it was banned, that it was, it was just a hold, it was just a freeze. It really wasn't banned. And one of their favorite talking points.
10 months freeze.
Yeah. Yeah. And one of their, and they were never going to bring it back up, uh, except for they got the pressure from outside. And that the email from the administrator said banned resources, um, on it. But the, the other, the other, you know, piece of course, is, as we're looking at this is just the realization that, um, like I said, they, they weren't going to bring it back up. They, they were, they were trying to save face. Oh, they're, then their big, their big argument is, well, some of them were still in the library. It's not a ban because they were still in the library and students could check them out if they wanted to. I said that, that's not the same thing as, as saying they're not allowed to be used in any education, in any teaching, in any, any conversation or, or building on the curricula that we still have from before, because you refuse to actually vote and approve the ones created, uh, over a year ago. So it's, it's just talking point after talking point, trying to save face, trying to deny. But yeah, it's, I think they realized that they were losing this argument and, uh, they tried to save face.
And they're probably telling their supporters quietly, hey, don't worry, we'll get past this election. We've got our handpicked superintendent, um, and we'll, you know, we're going to come back and, and do, you know, what, you know, what we need to do. One of those, we lost the battle, but we're going to win the war kind of, kind of things.
And again, I want to really hammer, this is not, you know, we talk about Trumpism and things like that. I really want to hammer, this is not, you know, they claim that we're all in for political reasons. And then we're all in for political agendas. You know, if, if, if welcoming and, and being inclusive of all of our students is a political agenda, then I guess I'm guilty. But truly, I'm, I'm here because of, of the havoc that they're wreaking, uh, you know, on our district. I'm here because I want our district to perform well. I want our teachers to have the resources they need, the administrators, administration, the board, the teachers to actually have a working, a working communication pipeline. I mean, that's the other big piece. The teachers have offered to meet with the board to go over these curricula, to go over the diversity list, to go over the math program we didn't mention. It's been, I think, five, six months of a math program that
That we desperately need, desperately need.
That we desperately need and teachers and administrators actually agree on this, which doesn't always happen. And the board once again just tabled it. And that is their way of just ignoring something, oh, we'll talk about it later, table it, and then it just sits on the shelf forever. And so again, this is not about politics, it's not about Republican and Democrat. This is about what is best for our district, how do we prepare our students? How do we make sure that our schools are still ranked high enough that people want to move into our district? This has to do with property values and property taxes and all those other things too. People say, I don't have a child in the district, it doesn't affect me. Yes, it does. You know, I moved here because of where we were ranked.
As did I.
I could have gone to suburban, I could have gone to Dallas town, I could, you know, I worked, you know, my wife worked up in Harrisburg and I was working in, in New York City. And so, yeah, it was nice to pick a district that was just above York, that we could kind of get to 83 easily. We could have hopped on 83 at suburban. I mean, we could have, it's, it's, we could have been a number of other places, but Central was ranked so high, had such a great reputation for being diverse. That was a huge reason I wanted to be here as well. I wanted my kids to grow up around diversity. And, uh, you know, so it's, it's more than just the book ban, it's more than just what do we agree or disagree on, on how masking choices should be made. You know, it, it's, it's about how, how are we going to help this district turn back around to really, really support the whole community, not just certain people?
So, yeah, so we, we, we have a few more minutes, but I want to talk about, you know, it, it's on one hand, it's, you know, it's not political. But the remedy is a political process, right? So
Yeah, unfortunately it has to be.
Right, right. So, and, and I think that's okay, because I think it's an opportunity to, you know, you know, you're letting the public make a decision. And, you know, I think that, you know, in, in situations like this where you have boards at any local level, you know, that aren't necessarily doing what's best for the community as a whole, they fly under the radar until they do something so over the top that everybody pays attention.
Right.
Right. And I think from that point of view, the, the book ban was a political gift. Um, in that it, you know, opened up a lot of people's eyes. I mean, obviously it would have been better had it not happened, but, you know, it, it opened up a lot of people's eyes and, and got people involved that wouldn't have been otherwise. So you're part of a four candidate slate, um, that's incredibly qualified. And you can learn more about them at citizensforCYSD.com. But you've got a former retired Major League Baseball player, Corey Thurman, uh, you've got a woman named Rebecca Reek.
Rick.
Who is it?
It's pronounced Rick, yes.
Rebecca Rick, who's got a resume 50 miles long in, in terms of being involved in the community and, and, and education. So you've got a very well-rounded slate of candidates. Unfortunately, we live in a political climate where the most qualified candidates don't always win. And, you know, we were talking before we went on, uh, started recording, you know, Central York School District, the, you know, the voter, the, the voters of, there's about 23,800 people registered to vote, of which 49.7% of Republicans, 35.2% are Democrats, 14.3% are independents. So by the pure numbers, you, you have an uphill climb. My question is though, it feels like, first of all, school board typically has never been an overly partisan office. You know, uh, it's, it's not one of those things where, you know, you're like, I have to vote for the Republican slate or the Democratic slate. How is, you know, because you're running a very organized campaign from what I've seen and, and really kind of doing this professionally. What has the response been in the community, particularly from those Republicans and independents?
I, I think what you alluded to, uh, just a minute ago, uh, about this being kind of a gift is, is not, it's very accurate. If, if we keep talking about silver linings, um, this is another one. I think that, um, the awareness of, it's, it's, it's illuminated the other side's true colors. In a way that, you know, nothing else probably could have done. So, you know, I can knock on all the doors I want, um, and try to tell people that we would do a better job than the people that are currently doing the job. But they're not going to necessarily believe me, um, because I have a D next to my name. But when I tell them that I would never ban books, um, and that this board did, suddenly they're like, wow. And I've, um, in the past few days, um, when I've done my door knocking and spoken to people and I, and they say, I have never voted for a school board race in my life, but I'm going to vote this time. And that's from independents and Dems and, and some more moderate Republicans. So I think that this has been a, a political gift for us. Not that I would, I would, I would give it back because I think it's really harmed a lot of people and hurt a lot of people. But, um, it has been a gift and I think that ultimately it will, it will be a net extreme good for the community. Because if we get into those offices, then we might not have otherwise if this hadn't happened. We're going to make positive change. And I think that it's very possible in a short amount of time that we can go back to the, the years of being proud to be in Central York School District and to be, have a, have a community that we, we can be proud of and have a school system that people want to move into and, 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 and make everything great again, to use a phrase. And so, I mean, it truly, it, it truly can be a wonderful thing. So, um, I want to kind of take, I want to use this to my advantage as much as I possibly can. I think we all should, because this really is, this touches a lot of people's hearts and, and we can use that to our advantage.
Have you gotten, uh, you know, has it really helped motivate people to volunteer, to donate, to do, you know, to kind of be involved?
Yes. We, our, our volunteer logs have, have grown exponentially in the past couple of weeks. And, uh, when we call out to people and we say, they say, what can we do to help? And, and we're getting lots and lots of help. So we're reaching more and more voters, way more than we could ever reach. And way more than we were able to reach in the primary when things were a lot quieter. So yes, we have gotten a lot more volunteers. We need more though. We always need more. We always need more.
Are, are you going to be able to do things like direct mail and things like that? I mean, is it, is it that big of a campaign?
Yes, we have, um, we have a number of mail pieces that are planning to go out. And we were able to send some to the primary. I mean, that's, that's been part of the beauty. There's enough people that see what's going on that they want to support us. And even we get, we got donation from Montana and some other places that people
Oregon.
Seen what we're doing, Oregon. And, um, you know, it, it's one of those things where people see it and say, hey, there's a chance here, there's a chance to make a difference. Maybe my, maybe not my own school district, because maybe there's not these issues. Or maybe because I'm in such the minority in my district that just the, the reality is it's, it's going to be a huge uphill battle. I mean, we, we have, we have wonderful volunteers, people working to help us run this campaign. And, um, doing their best to put together, you know, field strategy and how many numbers do we have to knock? And, and, you know, how many households do we have to get in contact with and, and voter lists and things like that? So, I mean, we're putting in as best of an effort as we possibly can. And, yeah, it is an uphill climb and, uh, but, you know, we, we truly want to make that positive change. I mean, again, their constant toss at us, I think, is, you know, the constantly, oh, look at us, we're just running purely politically. We, we just, you know, we want to bring politics into schools. And really I think it's a reaction of people who've been caught, people who have been caught for, for what they have done, who they are. And, uh, and it's, and it's the first time they've been challenged publicly is part of the reality too. This is, this is a new thing for them to actually be challenged in a way they have to defend what they do. You know, and, and you talked about it's often try not to be a partisan thing running for school board. It shouldn't be a partisan thing. It should be based off qualifications and those things. You know, and, and you talked about often try not to be a partisan thing running for school board. It shouldn't be a partisan thing. It should be based off qualifications and those things. Um, and when it comes to the primaries, you can still, uh, cross file. And one of their biggest complaints about us is that we cross file. But so did they. And it's, the hypocrisy is, is everywhere. And so their signs read the real Republicans. Um, that was all that, that's what they ran on. Their whole primary run was we are the actual real Republicans.
That's usually all it takes in York County. That's all it takes is just knowing that you're Republican. Yep. And then you'll win.
Never mind, there were also other candidates who were Republican running against them, but since they were the most organized of that group, they were running as the real Republicans. They, they, they've been for the first time, you know, ever that we know about, um, the Republican committee in York has officially endorsed them. And they've never endorsed, you know, political parties never endorse school board slates. Cause again, it's not supposed to be partisan. But I think it's for the first time they recognize they have a challenge. That, that we are competent, that we are experienced, that we are able to lead, that we're able to do things and we have people behind us that want to see this change. And. And so, yeah, for people listening, you know, if you're willing to go to that website, citizens for C Y S D dot com. And if you're willing to volunteer, make a phone call for us or, or send in a donation. I mean, everything that we get and everything that we can do. Gets us that one step closer to, to getting the people truly that, that are like, you know what? We're voting for common sense here. We're not, we're not voting for extremists. We're voting for, for, for common sense, not banning books, not trying to fire diversity people, not trying to, uh, scare off, uh, speakers that are going to come in and, and speak on equity and inclusion. Which happened.
They had to vet, yeah, they had to vet a world, a world-class diversity speaker. They had to see the speech before they allowed.
The second person.
Of the, yeah.
That was the second person they scared off. The first person was going to speak to the staff and the teachers. It's kind of their back to school event for, for the staff and teachers. And the Dr. Monet and, um, oh, well, she speaks about racism, so we don't want her there. So even though they've never, ever done that before, they, they. Tried to cancel her, you know, because, you know, they, they hate cancel culture.
Yeah, they hate cancel culture.
Been doing all year. Um, you know, they, they canceled her and then after enough backlash there, they were like, okay, she can come back. But Dr. Monet said, no, I'm not, I don't want to come back. I don't feel, I don't feel safe coming back to that environment. Then there was another one for their annual diversity. Event that they do every year that, well, the, the board doesn't do it. There are diversity coordinators and the students and teachers do it. And they want to do the vet, the speech that the person was going to be, they want to read it first and approve the speech just to make sure. You know, that they're not doing anything that might go against their, their quote unquote normalization of life. So. It's a pattern. Again, it's a pattern.
For, for people that love freedom so much, they sure are, uh.
Yeah.
They're free to censor what other people have to say.
Yep.
And it, and Amy and I were talking about this before we started to record, you know? The reason why, you know, normally it's, oh, it's a school board race. Okay, big deal. But I think that given the circumstances surrounding it, you know, and, and the attention that it got. You know, it's become kind of a flashpoint. It's, it's kind of a microcosm for what's happening nationwide, you know, no pressure on you guys. But, you know, to be able to show, you know, kind of where is the line, right? How much are, are folks willing to tolerate? You know, okay, I may be a Republican, but this is a bridge too far for me.
Right.
Right? This, this is where, this is where I'm, I'm drawing the line, especially because my kids are involved. You know, you know, kind of where is the, where is the measure of where we cross from right to wrong? Um, and it, it goes beyond, like you said, it goes beyond the partisan pop, politics, because I think one of the things that Republicans are struggling with is what is it to be a Republican? You know, if you're, you know, there's kind of this Donald Trump purity test, uh, you know, in the Republican party. And unfortunately I think too many Republicans are willing to sit back and, and not say anything and let things play out. And so an election like this where you've got a majority Republican area, where you've got these Republicans that are extremists. That are instituting policies that actually have a real impact on our kids. You know, and, and where, where would the population come down on it? Um, I, you know, I, I think it's going to say an awful lot about not just where we are, but kind of where we're going. You know, and, and I think it'll be kind of a, a, you know, no pun intended, a teachable moment.
Yeah.
For, for other people similarly situated. So, all right, well, we've been going for about a little longer than we'd planned, but it's been a great conversation.
Yeah.
Is there anything, uh, is there anything that, uh, you, you would like to add or that we haven't touched on already?
Just that if we're elected, we're not going to just sit there and let bad decision or difficult decisions not get made. You, you have to, when you're in a leadership position, which I think everybody knows, I don't think there's any school board members that get paid. It's, it's all volunteer. But we, we're not going to just sit on decisions that are difficult. We're going to address them. We're going to look at them. If we're given a list that we need to vet in order to make a decision, we're going to go by, go through that list, item by item. And, 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 and evaluate it and look at it from not just our own personal beliefs and, and with our own personal lens. But look at it from the lens of a community because we're serving the community. We're serving students and parents and taxpayers. And our teachers and administrators all at the same time. And so we can't have this tunnel vision of just our own belief system. We have to, we have to lead by, um, you know, lead for our community. And so we're going to look at each individual decision that comes across. The desk or whatever, in a metaphor you want to use and, and look at it and, and, and evaluate it, um, to the best of our, of our ability, um, from all different angles. And I, I vow to do that. I think it's really important that leaders. Do what's right, not just for themselves, but for everyone that they're serving.
Joel, anything?
Yeah. I mean, I alluded to it earlier, but you know, one of my biggest goals and part, part of my background is, is at least in our national church, we call them, uh, redevelopment pastors. So pastor that goes in a congregation that's really, really struggling, um, to help them turn things around. And I went into my congregation seven years ago. They were talking about how many months they had left. And now we're, I mean. The, the pandemic has definitely hurt, hurt everybody, but we are still, you know, moving forward and, and doing wonderfully and connecting with our community and, and truly being a neighborhood church again. And that's, big piece of that is, is communication. How do we empower people to do their jobs? How do we empower volunteers, empower the staff, empower the people to do what they were asked to do? And not be gatekeepers. You know, we don't plan on being gatekeepers. Um, like I said, the, the, the current board doesn't listen to the teachers. They don't really even listen much to the administrators. And I don't know how a school district can. Can be the best it can be if you don't trust the people who are actually trained and paid to do their jobs in education. I'm not a teacher. I'm not going to pretend to know more about curricula than, than, than an educator will. That's why I love that we have Becky, you know, especially in our, on our, on our slate, that she has all that experience. I listen to my, I listen to my wife. My wife teaches in New York City. You know, I, I list, I listen to other educators and find out. What is it that, that they think would help turn the direction of a district around, would help the, the children better, um, learn and, and better be prepared for the future? And that's, that's, I really want to build that communication. That's been totally gone, absolutely gone. Is, is build that pipeline of communication between the board members, educators, staff, administrators and the students. And yes, of course, the families, um, but, but right now especially, uh, you know, educators, students, administration, just so that we can work, we, we should be on the same team. It shouldn't be an us versus them position.
Absolutely. So like I said before, I think you've got an incredibly qualified slate. I think you've got a, a battle that is just. And it looks like you're doing all the right things. So I wish you the most, the best of luck. I'll definitely be watching the race. And, and like, and I'll put in the, the notes for everybody and in the email blast, but it's citizens for C Y S D dot com, uh, for the Central York School District. So Amy Milstein, Joel Fulmer, thank you so much for taking the time. I really appreciate it. It's been very illuminating.
Thanks so much for having us. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay.